Good evening. Noting the time and the presence of quorum, I have to begin our October 17th, 2022 Select Board meeting. We will start as we always do with hearing residents' concerns about any items not on the agenda. Please come forward.
Madeline Cruz, Sashamway, good evening. I'm here tonight not to have about any concerns. I just want to say thank you to each and every single one of you Select Board members for hearing our plea. I come here as a renter and as a member of Housing and Climate Justice Act and to just thank you all for listening to our advocacy when it comes to having renters being inclusive in towns' happenings. And I hope that as the future progresses, more work can be done to help people in our town. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Heidi Portman, and I live at 32 Parker Street in Acton. I'm here because I recently Zoom attended a meeting of the Acton Affordable Housing Committee and was absolutely horrified to hear the WR Grace present their plans in conjunction with Toll Brothers to build a 340-unit, four-story apartment facility on the Superfund site in South Acton. I object to it for so many reasons, at least to mention 340 units, 500 parking spaces, the traffic that will be changed in South Acton, looking at River Street, looking at Chadwick Street, looking at school and Parker, thinking about the water usage, 340 more houses consuming water. And then there's the real sensitive topic of the water and the wells around us and going in and just rearranging the topography of that land on a Superfund site. I'm horrified. Is it going to be something where it's septic? How is this affecting our sewage? There's just so many levels that I don't even want to get into today in my short time here, but I just wanted to voice my extreme objection and serious concerns and for you all to give it a lot of thought when it does come along your way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Martin Benson, 21 Deacon Hunt Drive. First, during the Select Board discussion regarding renaming Columbus Day to Native Peoples' Day, both Ms. Nogaretta and Mr. Snyder Grant insinuated that there were better representatives of the Italian community to celebrate in lieu of Christopher Columbus. To the best of my knowledge, neither of you are Italian. Therefore, it's inappropriate for both of you to speak on behalf of an ethnic community which neither of you are a part of, especially during a debate regarding the cancellation of a holiday first enacted in 1892 in response to rampant hate crimes targeting Italian Americans. Secondly, at recent meetings, both Select Board members and far-left activists have falsely claimed that residents voicing opposing viewpoints are engaging in attacks which shouldn't be permitted at meetings. Ms. Nogaretta even implied that it was improper for a community member to quote her comment from a prior meeting. The suggestion by some Select Board members that public participation must be limited to only comments supportive of the boards is disingenuous and in direct violation of the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. As a reminder, the First Amendment ensures both the right to freedom of speech and the right to, quote, "petition the government for redress of grievances," end quote. There is significant constitutional case law which upholds and protects both of these rights, including the 1964 Supreme Court case New York Times v. Sullivan. In their decision, the Supreme Court reasoned that the United States was founded on the, quote, "national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open," and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials, end quote. Thus, this board has no right to establish policies which restrict the First Amendment rights of the public. Third, it was misguided for the DEIC statement authored by Mr. Martin to be posted on the town website without first being approved by the Select Board. The statement was authored without all of the facts of the situation being known to the DEIC, the Select Board, and the community. It's dangerous for Mr. Martin to issue statements on behalf of the town which fit his predetermined narrative without first waiting for all the facts to be disclosed. As a reminder, on December 18th, 2020, Mr. Martin and Superintendent Light both issued public statements unjustly blaming colonial mascot supporters of being responsible for the Zoom bombing. These false allegations made by public officials were a coordinated act of violence directed against members of our community. When it was determined that the Zoom bomber had no connection to either Acton or Boxborough, both Mr. Martin and Mr. Light displayed bruised white male egos and refused to apologize to those they had falsely accused. Emails gleaned from a records request illustrate Mr. Light and Mr. Martin worked in coordination with State Representative Tammy Govea, Town Manager John Manjirati, and the School Committee Member Kira Wilson Cook to push the false narrative that colonial mascot supporters were responsible for the attack. Even after their innocence was determined, Mr. Manjirati falsely claimed that the investigation was still ongoing in order to keep this false narrative alive. Lastly, at the September 12th meeting, I spoke regarding the town's continued refusal to comply with orders from the Secretary of State to issue a response which is compliant with the public records law to my records requests submitted on April 20th, 2022. The town still has not issued a response compliant with the law, and thus I have appealed to the Secretary of State for a third time. Multiple residents have also received noncompliant responses to their records requests. Glean from the released records is a March 18th, 2021 letter from Town Council to a producer from Seven News Boston in response to a records request she submitted to the town on March 4th, 2021. This response is printed with the letterhead bearing the name of Town Council's law firm and is in full compliance with the public records law. Mr. Manjirati, why is it that when Seven News submits a records request, they receive a response which is compliant with the law, but when community members who pay for your salary, benefits, and bonuses submit records requests, they receive incomplete responses? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Cadlec. I just read the DEIC statement on the town website, and I have a few problems with it. I went to the, I listened to the DEIC meeting, which discussed the issue of the students and the accusation that one of them had a gun for an hour and a half. A good part of that hour and a half was spent trying to find out if anybody on the DEIC knew anything about it other than what was passed around by parents, you know, other sources of information, including Facebook, the most unreliable source of information there can be. And after the discussion, which showed that nobody on the DEIC really had any new or relevant information, the decision was made that the DEIC still had to publish some kind of a statement, which was then discussed and ended up with Mr. Martin offering to write a draft. And that statement went on to, really not say anything new, but then got into discussing the police with comments such as, I will quote, "Data, it highlights alarming outcomes for black people in the United States, particularly as it relates to police-involved events, police brutality, racial profiling, and threats of death. As an outcome of police brutality are tangible facts based on fears." It was so on and so on. Police brutality. There was no evidence of any police brutality or racial profiling in Acton. Why do we bring in what may be happening nationally? It doesn't make any difference. We are talking about Acton. But this document will live like other statements, regardless of the lack of evidence of any of this happening. The students were interviewed by the police. Obviously, there were some comments here about persons of interest and suspects. The police could not have considered any of the students as persons of interest or suspects, because if they had, they would have obtained a warrant and went to search their house because they were looking for the gun. None of them did. I don't know what the police and the students discussed, and I don't know how old the students were, but there is no evidence of any of this stuff, this language that appears in statements, and then go on to... We recognize that incidents of racism are neither infrequent nor diminishing, and so on and so on. Nothing to do with Acton. What does it have to do with Acton, Mr. Martin? Why do you put this stuff out? It just continues this false allegation that Acton is a racial town, and it's not. There is no evidence. Every time an police incident happens, you, Mr. Martin, convert it into evidence of racism. It is not. And we will continue to remind people that Acton is not a racist town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Daniel Gilfix from Vanderbilt Road in South Acton. My concerns tonight are twofold, both, again, directed at Mr. Martin, but both, I hope, open to consideration by the Select Board as a whole. Mr. Martin, at the last Select Board meeting, you responded to someone who questioned the lack of discourse at the DEIC meetings that you chair. If I recall, you explained that questions and comments were originally permitted but then disallowed because people started making what you considered outrageous and/or hurtful comments or remarks relative to the presence of racism in the town. In fact, the meetings to date only show objections to the labeling of Acton as a racist town, along with the relative prioritization and appropriate response to DEIC matters. And whether some people feel hurt by these differing opinions is unfortunate, but it's not, in my opinion, for you to decide if they're outrageous, nor should it be used as an excuse to stymie debate or free discussion. We all live in a democracy, and last time I checked, Acton was still part of this democracy too. I feel it's entirely inappropriate and borderline tyrannical for one person to decide that because he or perhaps other members of the DEIC committee disagree with town residents that they cannot respectfully voice their concerns, either to ask questions or add perspective. Otherwise, you're simply breathing your own exhaust while censoring dissent, which is the bedrock of our democratic process. I therefore urge you to reconsider this policy, and I call upon the Select Board to make a general statement that all committees and all boards under the purview of Acton government be required to entertain public discussion in order to operate as such. Matter number two relates again to this, to this letter, and in my view, Acton unilateral ery. I too am disturbed by the letter, which apparently you wrote and you got published on the website. In my opinion, it's not because six students of color were horrifically accused of possible gun possession and subjected to a traumatic experience, possibly as a result of someone acting out due to racism, that you should be permitted to issue a pro-victim narrative that jumps to conclusions about motives, ignores important facts, and points fingers. The statement, "We as members of DEIC stand with the young people directly impacted by this event," sounds like virtual signaling, and it sounds surprisingly uninclusive, as opposed to whom? Indeed, the letter slams our school administration, which in fact bent over backwards to show empathy to those accused and to communicate publicly what was done and why. Your letter slams our police force too, accusing it of racial profiling and associating with it with an irrelevant, fear-mongering reference to police brutality. And finally, the letter slams the town as a whole for not caring when it actually did. In sum, the letter seems overdramatized, unnecessarily negative, irresponsibly presumptuous, and completely divisive. Please take it down. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have someone online who wishes to make a comment.
Yes, Ms.? Janet Adachi?
Yes, good evening. Janet Adachi, Simon Halford Lane. I'm getting an echo of my... Anyhow, I have a few comments about the DEIC's October 11th statement regarding the September 14th lockdown at the high school. I'm hoping that I'm audible. I can hear myself.
Yes, you are.
Okay. The DEIC was able to post that statement on the town website and have it disseminated via the Town Notification Service to subscribing residents like me. Now, the Town Notification Service is a wonderful source of useful information about all sorts of municipal goings-on, and I highly recommend it to anyone interested in following town government. The DEIC's recent statement, however, was not simply another informational notice. It was a subjective opinion piece giving short shrift to the challenging need for deft action that the crisis created for the superintendent and police. The DEIC statement insinuated that the police questioning of the students was unjustified and simply another example of the racial insensitivity and racism that supposedly is rampant in Acton. Anyone who has watched the video of the September 22 school committee discussion and otherwise been following this issue as I have should appreciate why the superintendent saw a need to call the police and that, and the reason that race was not the reason that the police focused on the particular students. Aside from the bias and rather one-sided content of the DEIC statement, there's the issue of the statements having been posted on the town website and its dissemination by the Town Notification Service, which together might have given the impression that the comments had the imprimatur of and spoke for the municipal government. As a former longtime Select Board member, I would be very unhappy if people thought that the DEIC's remarks were on behalf of the town. Only the Select Board or the Town Manager with the Select Board's authorization can purport to speak on behalf of the town, so unless the Select Board formally endorsed the DEIC's comments, the statement shouldn't have been on the town website. Among the dozens of municipal committees, most of which have existed for far longer than DEIC, the DEIC and maybe the Select Board are among the few in recent years, and in my memory, that have access to the town website and Town Notification Service for the dissemination of committee statements. I happen to think that only the Select Board should have that sort of access, but if the DEIC is to continue having such access, then fairness requires that all town committees enjoy the same privilege. That's not what I would recommend, and the result might be an administrative headache, but it would be fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Notice nine, Mr. Chair.
Are you there?
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Tara, rather from Mass Ave. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Two questions before I move forward. I'm going to say, will we be able to speak during the point-of-view section of the agenda?
This is going to be a discussion between the Finance Committee and the Select Board, so we're going to severely limit discussion.
Okay. I have like a 30-second speed. Did I say it now or then?
Better do it now.
Will we be able to speak during the Housing Rehab Trust?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So I support concerns about 88 Parker. I like the DEIC public statement and the use of the notification system because of the emergency. I think it was just stated it came from the DEIC, and that it's appropriate for advisory committees to clear out things out as long as they say it's from that committee. Like when a fossil fire alarm goes off, everybody should be impacted equally and metal detected and lockers be searched. Support Jimi Juh and Jim's comments regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day and agree to Christopher Columbus with a slaughterer, proudly from his own letters, engaging in genocide and ethnic cleansing. I hope Italian Americans propose a more appropriate hero such as Sacco and Vanzetti, perhaps. And in terms of TOV, I'm concerned that under taxpayer, only our wallets are mentioned, not our property value, which is connected to the quality of life, how much open space and traffic is near our homes. They do not address the cost of growth, what can be done to minimize growth of unaffordable single-family, unsustainable homes through zoning and tree land protection measures that don't cost hardly anything but a little legal and staff cost. They don't address the future costs of sewer service to great roll, but the Select Board is spending hundreds of thousands on studying it, which could be used to meet capital needs instead. They mention sewer costs to the end-users, but the Select Board is encouraging and spending money studying, increasing that capacity, which historically has meant having existing residents pay for those costs. I want to point out how important your vote, your voice as Select Board member, that even one person can make a declaration, the other person's don't dispute it, town staff seems to respond well to that. So I urge you to act to make executive directors use your power. I had a conversation with a member of the Open Space Committee and asked how much of the town the Open Space Committee was point and conserving, 30%, 40%, 10%. And the person told me that there was no ultimate goal, and that if this Open Space Committee was to work to one, it would have to come from the Select Board, since the OSB is a dithery. Same thing with the Plan Board. Doesn't appear to be using its power to do town-wide zoning to restrict destruction or require preservation. They say they would have to be told by this Select Board to do so, to propose land clearing limits or tree preservation bylaw. They say they have to be directed by this Select Board. So I hope that you spend more time directing the boards and committees. The Water Resources Advisor meeting in a recent meeting, and I'm almost done, expressed concern about how having as much of a say in the direction of the water study that staff is directing, and I asked why they would not raise this concern to the Select Board. I was told that they're waiting for a direction from the Select Board. So with all these important plans, I hope you use your power of your voice to vote and direct important committees. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, next caller. Okay, caller, do you have any comments to make?
Oh, I don't think I, if this is... Are you speaking to me? Because this is Brandy Osmond, and I did not mean to raise my hand, and I'm walking up the stairs to the actual room anyway.
All right. We have a public hearing set for 7:10, so I'd like to move ahead with that, and then we'll drop back to the Chair update and the manager's update. So, under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Chapter 40, Section 22, the Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on October 17th, 2022, at 7:10 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204, Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, and by video conference and call-in for a taxi delivery license for Uga Post Transportation, Inc., located 420 Great Road, Acton. Log-in instructions for computers can be found here. For a computer, please click on the link to join the public meeting, actonma.gov/meeting/sb, or from a telephone, dial 646-876-9923 and enter webinar ID number 503-918-785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raised-hand feature to request to speak. Mr. Manager.
The information for this application was included in your packet. I don't believe there's anyone from the entity here, but if there are any questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
Hi, Frandy Osmond from the Transportation Advisory Committee. I actually haven't read the particular application, but I was talking to Austin Saganowitz and heard that there was about to be a taxi approved, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to remind the taxi company and all of you and everybody in the audience that we had a taxi program, and we just were awarded $5,000 more. Now, that's very little in terms of the, what it takes to get people around for those unmet needs. The taxi program was meant to help people with trips that are not covered by our normal daily van service for people who don't drive and need help. And we had $30,000 for that program. Now we have $5,000 more through the Making the Connections Grant program, which is a community compact program hosted by the town of Sudbury that we participate in. So there's going to be a little more, and that has to be used by the end of the year. And that's why I sort of wanted to get up interest and excitement in the fact that we have a little more, and we're still waiting to hear about, I think it's $60,000 more through Mass Development's taxi program, which is similar to what we had before in the $30,000. It's not ideal, taking people in taxis, but I just wanted to remind people that there is that little bit of added assistance. And so I'm very excited to hear that there's a local taxi company, because that's been one of the challenges, is getting taxi companies to even participate. So I just wanted to take that opportunity and also to welcome the taxi company. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion from members of the Board about this application? Jim?
Starting a taxi business is a very expensive proposition, and I just wanted to thank the operator for being willing to take this leap into, you know, helping to fulfill a communication, a transportation need in Acton as well as... a communicate, a transportation need in Acton, uh, as well as, um, you know, hopefully having a wonderful vi- an extra wonderful viable business in Acton. Thanks.
Thank you. On that, I would, uh, accept a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, application.
So moved?
Have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the, uh, taxi and delivery license, Uga Post Transportation, 420 Great Road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approved, thank you. Uh, so let's go back now to the, uh, Town Manager's update.
Thank you. Uh, just a note, uh, that when the Board voted the American Rescue Plan Act allocations on October 3rd, as part of its motion, it directed me to seek a legal opinion confirming that there wasn't any prohibition, uh, on using ARPA funds, uh, for sewer, proposed sewer expansion, uh, study, uh, that was listed as Project R20. Uh, we did check with Town Council, and we do have received confirmation that there is not a prohibition on using gifts or grants on the sewer system, and ARPA in this case is considered a grant. And so we'll proceed with the project as proposed, um, and, uh, we'll keep you up to date, uh, as we go forward. I will, uh, reach out to the Finance Committee, although some of them are here tonight with that update, because they had the same question, I believe. Another note, on November 10th, which is a Thursday, there will be a public forum which will be held virtually, so we hope that a lot of people can attend. It's going to be at 7:30. It's going to be about the open space and recreation plan. Every seven or so years, we reevaluate, um, the priorities from the community standpoint for what we should be doing to, um, advocate for and, um, and work related to open space and recreation. So we did a survey last fall. We had 500-plus, um, responses. Uh, we'd like to continue the engagement, and we hope that we get some people to come to this event, uh, on November 10th, that maybe we didn't do the survey, so we get some new voices on, into the conversation. Uh, so look for information about that in the coming weeks, but, uh, please mark your calendar for November 10th, Open Space and Recreation Plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Members? Comments? David?
I got a lot of things to address here. Um, uh, what order to address them in. First of all, all the things in, uh, Mr. Benson's statement, opening statement that called out me explicitly were wrong. Just say that, none of them were correct. Um, the, the fact that we don't take comments in, um, DEIC meetings, I've covered previously, um, in, in the beginning, we took comments, and then people were coming in with comments week after week saying things like, um, the, uh, the shooter in Atlanta was, uh, not racist or white supremacist, the shooter that shot, I forget exactly how many, a dozen Asian women, um, or that a, a policy can't be systemically racist unless it calls out race explicitly, which is, uh, demonstrably false. And so these things kept coming week after week, and they're exhausting for the people on the DEIC to deal with. Um, and we're happy to take comments, written comments. We do, and we read them. Um, but, um, and we don't pick and choose comments, we just don't allow comments anymore. Um, s- s- second thing, um, I did not author the DEIC statement. Um, it was drafted by one member of the EIC, not me, and it was edited as a group, as Charlie knows, because Charlie was at the meeting. Um, that, um, uh, I mean, I, I gave a statement here at, uh, two weeks ago, at, at this meeting two weeks ago, and you can go play that if you'd like. This statement does not, as some people say, uh, uh, object to any racial profiling. It doesn't say racial profiling in there. It doesn't say the calling the police was unjustified. Um, all, you know, most of the things that people said here today are, are just not in that statement. It expresses, um, it, it, well, it's amazing to me how many people, uh, want to express the point of view of black people or not black. Right? This, this statement expresses, was edited by, half the people who did the editing job in the DEIC were black, the other half were just other members of the DEIC. And, um, this statement tries to be empathetic for the black residents of our town, especially the students in question, and, um, their families. Um, you know, the lack of empathy for the innocent students here, you know, none of these students had a gun. And, and, you know, uh, the, the, the statement that, um, uh, Charlie, uh, the excerpt that Charlie read out of our statement specifically says that the police in the United States do those things that he said. I mean, he even read the word "United States." He didn't say the Acton Police did anything bad. In, in my statement here last week, I expressed pride in our police department, and I can read that statement again here if people are interested. Uh, and I do have pride in our police department, right? I, uh, they, they do a great job. They did a great job that day, um, and they have numerous policies that are just, are, are very good, right? And, um, I, I, and there was no, nothing in this, in the DEIC statement that, that went against our police department. But the lack of empathy for these students is, is just really, really impressive. These students have to live in this school now for the rest of their school career as being the students who are accused of having a gun. They have to go to school every day and be faced with this. And these students, you know, in my statement last week, you know, I, I expressed appreciation for our police department, who went into the school when there was a report of a gun and didn't wait outside for an hour. That's a, you know, a brave thing to do, and it's important that they did it, and it's wonderful that they did it. It's also a brave thing, the way these students reacted during, during the incident. Um, none of the, you know, the, they all, uh, kept their, their cool. They didn't run away. They weren't combative. And, and what this statement says on the part of the DEIC, um, is, um, uh, that, uh, considering the, what, what goes on in the United States, and the fact that, you know, a, a, a black person who has an encounter with the police in the United States is four times more likely to be harmed than a white person. Considering that, the, we expressed appreciation for these students, pride in these students, and, um, you know, and consideration for these students. So, um, I would ask people to go read it again. It's not everybody's statement, it's the DEI's statement. It's not, someone's called this the statement on, uh, uh, for the town. It's not. It's explicitly signed by the DEIC. And if the, um, uh, um, uh, you know, the, the Select Board doesn't want the DEIC to make statements anymore, the, the Select Board can vote that way. But, um, uh, otherwise, uh, um, you know, I, from time to time, the Select Board, the DEIC will continue to produce statements. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Other members? Kimi Ja?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you, David, for your statement. I echo them 100%. Um, you know, it was made today the point of we can't speak for, um, groups that we are not a part of, um, and that's a true statement, and that's something that, um, you mentioned. Um, and we did get to vote on it as a Select Board, um, so, um, really appreciate that. Um, just wanted to note that, um, this weekend, we had a Diwali celebration. I wanted to give a huge shout-out, um, to Deepika Prakash and her incredible team of young people, um, who gathered over 1,000 people at the Boxborough Sergeant Library this weekend to celebrate Diwali, um, and honored the day. Um, so really, really grateful for that. It was such a great event. Um, I saw a lot of familiar faces there, so that was great. Um, also wanted to give a quick update on our Indigenous Peoples' Day effort. Um, so as many of you know, um, we had to cancel our Indigenous Peoples' Day event due to unforeseen circumstances, but one thing that I'll be doing is working with Fran, um, to see if we can work with her, um, Historic District Commission, to see if we can host more events, um, hopefully a series of events, so that way we're building trust and goodwill, um, between the Nishoba Tribe, who, um, is very much, um, a huge part of this town's land and its, and, and the connections to this land, and so, um, really grateful for that, and I'll be working with Fran on that. Um, also, I just wanted to, uh, note that, um, someone mentioned the First Amendment, um, so just wanted to say that we all know the First Amendment well. Um, feel free to quote any of us on the Select Board, but there's a difference between quoting and personally attacking, so just want to underscore that, um, and that's it for me. Thanks.
Uh, Kimi Ja, a point of clarification. Did you state that we voted and approved the statement that David read the other night?
Oh, no, sorry. I, I misspoke in that case.
Thank you. Fran?
I just wanted to just add a quick comment that I agree with what David has said, um, and I just want to remind folks that Acton's not immune to what's going on in the country. We're not in a bubble. I was driving back from an appointment in Concord to see school-aged children standing outside, and I had a feeling of dread. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. And then I started learning more and more about what was happening, and I even felt even sad that our community has to deal with this over and over. Um, that's all I have to say. Oh, I do want to say one more thing. Sorry. Um, I'm happy to report that the Human Services Committee is meeting, having their first meeting, um, this Thursday, so to stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
So, uh, we once raised hands to have me be the, uh, rep to the Acton Boxborough Community Resource Network, and, uh, at a future meeting, I'd like to have us reconsider that, because Fran, now being, uh, part of the Human Services Committee, came to our last ABCRN meeting, and, you know, she's clearly the right person to, uh, to go to those meetings, so for another time. And also just to echo what other people said, Saturday was a very special day with the, with the big school opening ceremony and then the wonderful Diwali celebration. I was just really glad to be there. Thanks.
Thank you.
A very brief comment.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I won't go through all of the things that Mr. Martin said, but one is very simple. Lack of sympathy had to do with lack of knowledge. I am pretty well informed of what's going on in Acton. I did not know this incident happened until just before our meeting. And had I been able to make a comment to the DIC, Mr. Martin, I would have said that. Just, I did not know about it. And I'm sure that's true of a lot of other people. The reason for that is the schools do not inform the general resident in Acton. They have on their list of stakeholders, the faculty, the parents, and the students. And I've said more than once to the superintendent, the general population in Acton wants to know what's going on in the schools. Had we, had I known about this incident, I would have expressed sympathy, because I think what was happening was awful. To repeat, I did not know anything about it.
Thank you. I have one announcement. The, uh, Acton Dog Park Committee is going to be holding a public forum on Wednesday, October 26th, 7:00 PM, in this room, to go over some of the, uh, the plans. The committee's been very busy. Uh, they've secured the, uh, services of a designer to design not only the dog park, but also the, uh, associated senior park, and how it will interact with the eventual housing authority property. Now, this is in furtherance of one of the Select Board's goals from last year, to create a unified plan. So it should be an exciting forum. Uh, we'd welcome as many people as possible to come, take a look at the work they've been doing, and be able to present comments. Thank you. Next up, presentation, Finance Committee Point of View and Discussion of Upcoming Joint Meeting with Acton Boxborough Regional School District School Committee and Boxborough Officials. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having us. All right. You're going to put my presentation up? Is there a way for me to switch the slides, or should I just indicate to you? All right. Thanks. Okay. So I'll launch right in. Uh, this is our FY24 point of view. We voted on it September 15th, I believe. Go ahead to the first slide. Thanks. Okay, so.
Excuse me, as.
Yes.
As Select Board liaison, uh, this is Christine Russell and Adam Noldy. Yes, but everybody who's watching may not know.
Also, yes. Good point.
Adam is the, um, current Chair of the VINCOM. Christine was Chair last year.
Yes, and, uh, Vice Chair Steve Noon is support behind us. All right. Now I will launch. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions, obviously. Uh, these are the topics we'll be exploring in this presentation. Uh, we'll bring each of these items to your attention and then make, um, recommendations from our financial perspective. The key points we would like you to focus on are, um, our spending is predicted to outpace our revenues within the next three years. Our town reserves are strong and within DOR guidelines. Um, the AB school districts' reserves, uh, which they call excess and deficiency, or E and D, are currently below where we would like to see them. Uh, ideally, they would stay above a floor of 3% of their budget. Uh, the town has identified many capital needs for the maintenance of town infrastructure that need addressing and come with potentially large price tags. And, um, last, our taxpayers are feeling the impact of more than just increased tax bills, and we would encourage you to consider all factors when thinking through our spending decisions for FY24 and beyond. Okay, spending versus revenue. Revenue and expenses. Revenue refers to the money that comes into the town in order to cover all of our approved spending. Uh, the largest source of revenue comes from us, the taxpayers, in the form of our real estate assessment. By law, that amount can increase by no more than 2.5% plus new growth. This number makes up 86% of the FY23 budget. The next biggest revenue source at 6.3% is our debt exclusion. Uh, these are tax dollars on top of, prop 2.5 that we all agreed at town meeting to add on to our tax bill, uh, to pay for large projects that we weren't able to pay for within the operating budget. This includes projects like the North Acton Fire Station, the newer Boardwalk Campus School, um, updates we made to the Public Safety Facility, et cetera. Uh, our third largest revenue source at 5.1% is called local receipts, which are made up of excise taxes, meal taxes, permits, et cetera. And the last two, state aid and town reserves, make up just over 1% each. Last spring, we asked the town, the school system, and Minuteman to give us their best guess estimates on what their expenses would be for the next three years, so we could better plan our recommendations to you. They got back to us with an updated ALG plan of projected costs and revenues, and based on these projections, we have reason to be concerned that without some strict cost-saving measures, our expenses will outstrip our revenues within the next three years. Please note that the title of this slide is Spending Projections. I want to be very clear that the entities we're dealing with have given us their best estimate on their budget needs and our anticipated revenues. It's our job to make recommendations based on the information we currently have. At this time, it is clear that the projected increase in the budgets for Minuteman, ABRSD, and the town combined to exceed our revenues. These numbers. These numbers do not currently include a use of free cash from the town or E&amp;D from the school. So as of right now, the schools' reserve dollars are much lower than we would like to see them. So for the moment, we actually don't recommend much coming out of that fund. That recommendation may change when we know more about their turnbacks. And on the town side, our recommendation stands that they spend down reserves no lower than 3% of the overall budget. It is possible that free cash amount would be enough to substantially close the gap for FY24, but it would not be enough to address FY25 and 26. Spending changes need to happen as soon as possible to bend the curve back in line with our revenues as currently projected. This is a people-driven town. The majority of our budgeted funds go to pay for our town staff, educators, and administrators. As this is the biggest budget item and we remain limited by Prop 2.5 and our ability to increase taxes, it is vital that we consider the impact of dedicating over 3/4 of our budget to a fixed 4% increase. By locking in three-year contracts with these increases, we continue to ensure that the only place to find savings without cutting personnel is to cut all other spending. Last year, the school district made hard cuts to staff in order to bring their budget in line with our available revenues. We have had several years of declining student population. So staff rightsizing is definitely something we think the district should be open to. That being said, we believe long-term financial security depends on budgeting closer to our available revenues. And a fixed 4% increase on 75% or more of our budget makes this very difficult to achieve. So these are the things we know and things we're able to assume when looking at our financial future. One, we know that Minuteman is going to increase by 30% in FY24, 18% in FY25, and 9% in FY26. After that, we can expect Minuteman to level out. These years represent the last set of borrowing we previously agreed to for the construction of the new Minuteman campus, as well as the increased student population from Acton. Two, we know that the Middlesex Assessment, which is our retirement fund, is going to increase by roughly 6% year-over-year until we have fully funded it. This is a payment we must make. It is not optional, and we have to budget accordingly. And three, we assume that health insurance costs will continue to climb. Although the last two years, the increase was around 10%, the average cost over the last 10 years is closer to 5%. So based on that information, we built in a 5% increase into our model. But keep in mind that this is a projection, and these numbers can and will change. Once you've accounted for these three factors, what's left is the difference between those three fixed costs and our projected revenue. Without including free cash or E&amp;D, our budgets for all other operations can only increase by 0.6% in FY24, 1.16% in FY25, and 1.39% in FY26. The numbers would all be impacted by an increase or decrease in the Health Insurance Trust Assessment, an increase or decrease in state aid, and our decisions regarding use of reserves. Those factors would only serve to close the gap for this coming fiscal year and would not address long-term concerns regarding spending versus revenue. We strongly recommend all entities work to find long-term, ongoing cost savings in their operating budgets. In line with the Department of Revenue, it is the Finance Committee's policy to keep town free cash reserves between 3% and 5% of the overall budget. This practice ensures we stay in good fiscal standing with the state and maintain our AAA bond rating with Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. Previously, budgeting practices had us dedicating free cash dollars to the previous fiscal year's budget with the assumption that turnbacks, which are certified in August, well after the budget is approved by town meeting, would replenish our free cash back to a number above our 3% floor. For the past few years, the town has changed the practice to spend no lower than the 3% floor and use the August turnbacks in planning the upcoming year's budget rather than in the previous year's budget. This is a practice we would like to see in the ABRSD budget as well. We recognize that in the past few years, the schools have relied more heavily on E&amp;D use than even they would like to. And we hope that cost-saving measures can be employed to allow a more fiscally desirable reserve position in the future. And the third bullet in this slide is in regard to other reserve dollars held by the towns and schools. Should we come to a point where discussion of an operating override is necessary, we believe use of these funds should be considered as an alternative or means of mitigation before any override proposal is brought before the taxpayers. So part of our efforts to provide long-term fiscal planning include thinking ahead on items that it would be unrealistically difficult to include in the operating budgets. The town and schools have developed capital improvement plans that identify large projects coming to us over the next 10 or more years. While we can't always know when an expensive HVAC system is suddenly going to quit on us, we can make plans to replace a 40-year-old roof, replace an aging fire truck, or identify the crumbling infrastructure of our DPW facility. These significant projects typically have price tags that would be difficult or impossible to fund inside of our Prop 2.5 revenue stream and are often paid for with excluded debt or loans we vote to pay for outside of Prop 2.5. As you can see here, the town and school have some significant needs identified. None of these projects are a guarantee at this time. They haven't been budgeted for, prioritized at a school committee or Select Board meeting. They have simply been identified by each body as upcoming projects that will need our attention sooner rather than later. We think it's important that both entities are aware of the capital project needs they each have and when they're hoping to pay for them, so we can do our best to not overload our taxpayers. It's also important for you, the taxpayer, to know what needs are out there when making a decision on which projects to support when it comes to time to vote at town meeting. So this chart represents our current debt service payments and interest per year. These are projects, like those listed on the previous slide, that were too big to attempt to pay within our operating budget. The entities proposed, and we all agreed, to pay for these projects outside of Prop 2.5. As you can see, we have a large dip in our debt service payments this coming year and another one in FY29. The dip in FY29 brings us back down almost to where we would be if we hadn't funded the new twin school, called the Boardwalk Campus. These dips would impact the taxpayer by a reduced overall tax bill. As we consider the needs shown on the previous slide, keep in mind that any approved project that isn't funded by grant or some other means would likely add on to this chart for the length of the loan and mitigate or eliminate the expected tax reduction. So future capital projects should be approached with caution, as always. This town has done an excellent job in bringing in state and federal funding to aid us in our large projects. We've used Mass. School Building Authority partnerships for school-related projects, community preservation funds for preservation of historic buildings, development of affordable housing, and the acquisition and development of outdoor recreational facilities. And we tapped Mass. dot money for development of our Kelly's Corner project. This is one of Acton's strengths, and we commend past effort and encourage the town and schools to continue to find ways to tap these and other resources as we move forward in addressing Acton's needs. We highly recommend both entities do everything in their power to avoid spiking the debt service chart and taxpayer wallets. Okay, so now that we've talked about spending, reserves, and capital projects, we'd like to take a second to talk to you about the Acton taxpayer. We have a growing senior population, up from 8.4% in 2010. Just over a quarter of our households have school-aged children, and 65% of our budget goes to supporting the school system. These charts are meant to provide a frame of reference when thinking about the people who will be asked to pay for services, both on the school and town side. Acton is clearly a school-centered community known throughout Massachusetts as an excellent place to raise and educate our young people. It is also known for its history, investment in conservation land, and diverse population. It's important to look at the whole community when deciding which services to emphasize. Cutting too deep into services on the town or school side could drastically change Acton's prominence and character. Spending too heavily could make it difficult for our current residents to remain in this great town. Finding the right balance is the key to our success moving forward. Okay, so let's talk about why there are blank spots on this slide. We used to use median family income because it was available through the Department of Revenue and Census sites. They have since switched over to reporting median household income instead. So we are slowly transitioning this slide. So here's what this data means. Median represents the exact middle of all assessments. There is some reasonable debate that average is a better classification of Acton's tax situation, since median is a value that will move around over the years. For our purposes, we are interested in understanding what percentage of our taxpayers' income goes to taxes. The Census no longer tracks average household income, so we use median for this purpose. As you can see, more than 10% of our income is dedicated to our tax assessment. Since the Census changed the way it reported for FY20, we only have three years of data to observe trends. Over the next several years, this will give us a better understanding of whether or not we are trending up, down, or holding steady in the percentage of our income we pay in taxes. As you likely know, inflation is, when I authored this, at 8.52%, well above the long-term average of 3.26%. On the one hand, inflation has led to your home value going up. And if you've got a used car to sell, there's someone out there who will pay you handsomely for it. On the other hand, there have been significant increases in the cost of everyday goods and utilities. Leftover supply chain issues related to the pandemic, as well as the impact of the invasion by Russia of Ukraine, have added to cost increases on many everyday products. Residents are also likely to see a large increase in water bills as the water district moves to upgrade their water treatment plant to mitigate the PFAS in our water supply. And for those of you on our sewer lines, you will see an increase in that assessment to cover the cost of repairs to the treatment facility. These factors are not in the control of our budgeting bodies. These are other factors that will impact our residents and chip away at their resources for the foreseeable future. We bring this to your attention because, as we stated before when discussing, like, the capital projects slide, we'd like you to consider the taxpayer as a whole when building your budgets and not hyper-focus on your entity. The $661,506 circled above does not include the proposed use of $1 million in free cash, which would allow for an increase of roughly 1.64% beyond our fixed expenses. This would still leave us with a significant budget gap and would not serve to bend the spending curve to more aligned with projected revenues. Continued high inflation and healthcare costs will make it that much more difficult for us to maintain services within our revenue stream. Evidence suggests we are at a tipping point in our spending. Although the schools made significant cuts to last year's budget, we fear that difficult choices will need to be made by all stakeholders if Acton is to remain fiscally sound. So I'll just leave you with these concluding thoughts, that our taxpayers are feeling the pinch, that inflation and healthcare costs will remain high for the foreseeable future. Recession isn't just possible. We're basically in one. And the town and schools must manage budgets within revenue sources to avoid an operating override. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? David.
So I don't really have any questions. First, I just wanted to thank you for this presentation and bringing it to us this year. I think it's very helpful for us to hear it and for the rest of the town to hear it at this point in the budget cycle. And I thought it was a very clear presentation this year, and I agree with your conclusions. The thing I just wanted to point out here, which I've mentioned to you guys as well, is that median tax bill doesn't represent the average tax bill. In this presentation, it really overstates the amount of increase to the average household. I understand the reasons why they did it statistically, but I just want to point that out. So I think it's an important point. Anyway, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks, Steve.
Comments? Fran? Jim?
Couple of questions. First of all, thanks for this. Always helpful to hear from you guys. There's a lot of residents who aren't taxpayers. And I'm wondering how the Finance Committee thinks about the impact of Acton's financial decisions on residents who don't happen to be taxpayers because they don't own a home. We have, you know, a lot of our residents don't live in houses.
So are you referring to renters, then?
Yeah, for example, mostly.
I think we think of it in a more holistic way in that it all trickles down, right? Everybody's rent is directly related to the cost of the landlord putting the house on the market. So in essence, they really are taxpayers. They just aren't paying taxes directly, right? Through real estate. But they're ultimately footing the bill for it.
Thank you. The thing I noticed was that big increase in, you know, household median income, '21 to '22. Do we know much about whether that's because of turnover? You know, so people that are buying new houses or moving into Acton are more well-off than the current residents are because it's so freaking expensive to buy a house here now? Or whether incomes are rising because, you know, the people that live here, their income is going up? And I'm wondering if you had any demographic or financial information on that?
No, I don't think we have any direct analysis on that. That's a question we would generally refer to Brian Mullen.
Great, okay.
Or...
Yeah, or Steve.
Yeah.
And one more question was, can we go briefly look at that revenue slide again? Or at least, I was confused about grants and state aid and how those are represented in our income.
The third slide. So...
Okay, so you have state aid there. And are grants considered part of our revenue? Or are they something else? Or are they so... I mean, it seems like we, in the town, as you've mentioned, we're trying to do a really good job of maximizing grant income. And I didn't know how that showed up.
That's a really good question. John, you might, Manjari, if I could. When, in the ALG spreadsheet, where does, does grant money show up there? Or is it something that is applied after the fact?
No, that, it's not on the ALG plan.
I didn't think so, okay. It's one of our other revenue sources in that it helps us pay for things we move forward. But it's, you're right, it's not in our revenue stream in that way and that we capture in the ALG plan.
Okay, thanks.
I can add to that as well. I think in general, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, that grants are generally going to be tied to a specific cost, a specific project. So they don't really generally go to support ongoing operating, although in cases like ARPA and some other situations, we do have some of that money being captured for operating budgets. But generally, they're tied to a specific cost and therefore not related to the ongoing budget process.
Got it. Thank you. That's really helpful.
Kim.
Hi, thank you. I also echo what my other board members have said. Really informative presentation. I was wondering if you could go back to the slide where you listed the different capital projects from the town and the school district? Thanks. So for this, one thing I did want to ask was, was there an incorporation of the Climate Action Plan Action Plan into looking at needs for capital projects? Because I know that we are trying to overlap the two, but there are several things mentioned in our Climate Action Plan that we're hoping to do that will be an additional cost to the town.
So this is literally pulled from the town's Capital Improvement Plan page and the schools' Directive Capital Plan page. So it's whatever these two entities, you all have projected and posted for access for the public, that's where I got this information.
So can I ask a question back, which is, will we be starting to get the Climate Action Plan included as part of the CIP?
I think that's the plan, although.
Yeah, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is on the website, was presented in December of last year. The Climate Action Plan was completed this summer. So the process that we're doing this year in preparation for the 10-year plan, we'll be presenting December 6, I believe, this year, would be incorporating the Climate Action Plan and the other select board and other priorities that have come up in the last year into the 10-year plan.
Thank you. Yeah, so next year, we can expect to see it in the point of view, then? Thanks.
Any other comments from other members of the board? Okay. I guess I've got a couple of logistical questions. As noted, we're going to be meeting in joint session with the school committee and with our counterparts in Boxborough. So here on the board, hopefully later on tonight, we're going to discuss a little bit about what sort of a presentation the select board would make. Will the Finance Committee be making the same presentation to those folks?
That is our plan.
That is the plan.
Good plan.
That's what we thought.
I think it's, you know, I knew that all of this was coming, and I hope other people have been seeing that in the distance, that these things are going to be happening and that we're racing towards the cliff. You know, the only comment I can make again is, you know, as a longtime resident of town and liaison to our Council on Aging, we had some really serious issues with our senior population, which is increasing by leaps and bounds. I think now our, you know, on our last count, I think we've got 5,200 seniors in town, so I think it's probably equivalent to the student population. And you look at the disparity between the amount of assistance and facilities and other support that we offer to our seniors compared to what we offer to our students, I think there's a real disconnect there. Going to the issue of tax bills, the, you know, I think you've had, I figure about 10% of somebody's income goes to taxes right now, town taxes. I think there's quite a dramatic disparity between the tax bills that are paid as a percentage of income of seniors. My mother, before she passed on, was paying about 30% of her entire household income was going towards paying property taxes in the town of Acton. And I don't think that that's an anomaly. So that's certainly something that I think has to be front and center for schools to understand. Finance Committee, I know you guys understand it, and certainly this board, I hope understands it, but that'll certainly be a keystone of the comments that I'll be making. In any case, thank you for a very great, comprehensive report. I'll open it up if members of the public wish to make any comments as well.
Thank you.
I think they're all gasping for breath right now.
They might be off the hook.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd like to give an extra thanks to Christine Russell, who for many, many years, even before my presence as a INCOM member, has really sort of taken ownership of the point of view. So I really appreciate her doing all the hard work and the presentation.
Glad to do it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, goodnight.
So moving on, you know, sort of a segue, we are going to, we're all invited over to the new Boardwalk campus in a week and a half or so, and it should be an excellent meeting between all of the INCOMs. And I think, you know, I will be making some comments on behalf of the board to all attendees, but I'd like to hear your thoughts about what other issues you think we should highlight, specifically as far as budget, as budget goes. I think one of the items that I will point out is we've got the Capital Improvement Plan, which every year gets voted, so it's a little premature for us to say much until after we've seen the updated plan. I think it's also important to look at some of the long-term projects that will benefit both the town and the schools. I'm thinking specifically about the, we've got a shared facility at 14 Forest Road where we fuel up both town and school vehicles, and this board, thank you, voted a quarter of a million dollars for ARPA funds to begin work on that. But that's really going to be a shared cost between the town and the schools. And also, I think I would make note of the fact, looking at the goals that this board voted, any goals that have a specific financial impact, I think those are items that we're going to have to highlight because I think it's important that we keep faith with those goals that were voted by this board this summer. But I'd be interested to hear what other members of the board might think we should highlight during our meeting. And I think we'll, I expect we'll probably have about 10 minutes to be able to make a quick presentation to the combined boards. Jim?
I think you've covered a lot of the important points, Dean. I might mention a couple of others. There was a really disturbing, there's been a couple of disturbing moments where the Minuteman budget has been sort of poked at as, you know, well, that's where we should be saving money, usually in situations in which the, you know, the school and the town are there and representatives from Minuteman are not. You know, I think we've seen a, we have an understandable increase in what's going on with Minuteman, both because of the capital expenses and because more of our students in Acton are choosing to go there because it's a great place to get an education that you can't get in the regional schools. So I just want to make sure that we hold up the importance of, you know, trade education and the other education that you can get at Minuteman. I think that's probably all I have for that meeting. I really appreciated being to listen in on the audience at the last ALG meeting, and also appreciated that you've stopped having those at 7:00 in the morning. This was at noon, it was much more humane. And, you know, I hope to continue to be, you know, learning more as that process gets deeper into the, you know, into the tighter, sometimes more tense conversations that need to happen to settle all this out.
Thank you. Other comments? David?
Yeah, I don't know what needs to be in your presentation. I mean, obviously, we need to tread lightly in terms of budgeting for both capital and operations this year as lightly as we can. It's going to be, you know, tough to work out and how to, you know, balance things in, not only, you know, everything, you know, among the municipal departments and between the school district and the town. So there's a lot of balancing that happens, and I think that the meeting with the five boards is good as, you know, so we understand, you know, each other's. I think one thing about Minuteman, and I think the Finance Committee put Minuteman in the cost that we couldn't really control. But, I mean, it is important to note that in addition to the new building and in addition to the fact that Acton has more students going there, their cost per pupil is rising much, much faster than just about anything else. And unfortunately, it's very difficult being, you know, with the regional school district, we're one of two towns, and so there are a small number of parties to deal with, right? In terms of, you know, collaborating together. That's not true for Minuteman, even though there are fewer towns than there were a few years ago. And so it's difficult to get a hold of that, and that's a difficult situation. They can expand what they do, you know, including, for example, making room for more students without a buy-in from all the member towns. You know, they have to get a buy-in from their school committee, but there isn't actually a lot of interaction between our representatives and this board, for example. We have one representative on the school committee, and we don't interact with her very often. And so maybe that's an opportunity for more interaction, but even then, even if that happened, how would our representatives collaborate with the rest of the towns, and do the rest of the towns feel like we do, right? Whatever that feeling is, you know, I don't know. It's a difficult situation.
Thank you. Kim and Jim?
Yeah, in addition to what Jim and David had said, I think looking at some of the key things that we outlined in our Climate Action Plan, I think will be important, and kind of seeing and getting a feel for, because, I mean, the Climate Action Plan does incorporate feedback both from the town and the school district, and so I think incorporating that as something that gives a nod to the fact that we will be incorporating this into a future Capital Improvement Plan, but is also a big expense that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to manage, I think will be key. So pulling specific things from our Climate Action Plan that we feel like has been a priority on our select board, and seeing ways that we can start those conversations and how to fund those.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you. It'll be an interesting meeting. I've never attended a meeting of that many elected officials and Finance Committee members, so I look forward to participating in whatever way I'm supposed to. I do think that, you know, some of the things that are fixed costs that the Finance Committee has identified, such as our pension assessment and things like that, are continuing to increase at a larger rate than our operating budget is. So if we have a 6.5% increase in retirement and our budget only goes up close to 3 or whatever, and that happens every year, we're going to be looking at a huge situation in a few years. So it's continuing to, you know, something that we're working on in our planning for the budget presentation is some of those fixed costs and how it relates to some of the things that we're trying to do. So I look forward to watching and participating in that conversation.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll move on to the next item, discuss next steps for affordable housing rehab trust study approved at town meeting under Article 52. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. So at the October 3 meeting, I presented a draft scope for how to use the funding that was approved at the town meeting for a study to look at the feasibility of establishing a rehab trust. This is something that the town actually looked at a few times over the last 15 years, but, and I think after meeting with some of the folks that proposed this citizen petition last week and continuing to talk with our staff, I think I have a better sense of where this study should go. And so the basics of this study are, we're going to look at making an initial investment in acquiring rental units and fixing them up and maintaining them, and then seeing if we can do it repetitively. And basically, we talked about who could do this work. We think that the Regional Housing Services Office is very well-positioned to do this work because they're very familiar with our housing stock and our housing policies, and I think they also have spent a lot of time trying to understand exactly what was approved at town meeting, and I think we're there. Some of the members of the group I met with are here tonight, others are watching from home, and I think that, you know, it'll be interesting to see what the results say, and I think it's something that we can use to plan, probably not for this budget year, but I think for a future budget year, we can use this information to put together an interesting program if it's determined to be feasible, which I think would be an exciting, exciting new element to bring to the town, and it's all the efforts that are ongoing to help with housing issues.
So there was a specific appropriation town meeting, and then we had a lot of back and forth about, now there's quite a delta between the first proposal, I believe the Planning Department came up with, and the money was appropriated. So where do we stand on that?
Yeah, so that proposal, we had estimated would be around $8,000. That included a large community engagement component, which, after discussing it further, we don't believe that that's necessary at this time, and so that really refines down the level of work required. We do believe that we can complete this study within the $2,500 that was appropriated at town meeting, with the potential for some additional hours to run on our tab for the RHSO program that's already in place. So there is a little bit of a cushion there that we could utilize through our RHSO relationship that allows us to maximize what we can get out of the $2,500 that was appropriated at town meeting.
Thank you. And so as far as next steps, we'll be hearing back from you in a few months, or, I believe you said that it probably would not be ready to be incorporated in your budget planning?
Well, it's something that I think they could do this winter, so certainly my budget will be presented by that time. Town meeting won't happen until May, so the board can, I suppose, look at other ways to fund something sooner. But I think one of the ways that this project would get some of its startup funding would be through CPA, and that process would have already passed. I think those applications are due in two weeks or so. And so I do think it's something that we'd probably be looking to start up next year, or at this time, or propose, rather, next year.
Okay, thank you. Comments from members of the board? Jim?
As I recall, there was a couple of different models, and I'm wondering which one or both you've settled in on for this initial feasibility study. As I recall, one involved, you know, being, buying units that would be rental units, and the other was buying units that would be sold to people. You know, sort of, it's like, one is sort of, one is related to what the AHA does with rentals, and the other's more associated with the ACHC does with homeownership opportunities. And I was wondering if in your conversations with proponents or in your own staff conversations, you decided which of those routes was the one that was most likely to be, you know, useful to be looked at?
I think ultimately, we want to look at both models, but I think to start out, to try to refine the scope of work, we're just going to look at the rental model at this point.
And would that be, so sorry, a follow-up question? Okay. In terms of buying units, does that mean looking at condo units primarily that can be bought individually?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Fran?
So you, we would be prepared to do the feasibility study this winter? Is that the plan?
That's how I would, I would request that RHSO do it this winter. Yes.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Nope, okay. Okay, we've got some in the virtual audience?
Hello, this is Terrick again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much to Jim for asking, who, Manjari, the town manager, to meet with us, and thank you to John for arranging the meeting and bringing the support staff. I thought it was an excellent meeting, new staff member, I'm sorry, I forgot her name. It seems particularly well-suited, given her education and concentration in urban planning, although urban, since the first goal in the master plan is to preserve the rural character of the town. Either way, I think that she has the technical skills, so I'm very excited. And it seemed like she grasped some of the things and presented, when we were having a trouble adding, she added all the complicated numbers and presented a correct total, so it was very exciting. I'm also excited about John's presentation just now, not just because it seems to address all our concerns, but I felt like his verbal presentation was an excellent summary. I personally haven't seen the final draft or the scope of work to make sure that our concerns were addressed in writing, but hopefully that was done as promised, and I look forward to seeing it. And I have no objection to the RHSO doing that work. In fact, I feel like they are in an excellent position. They helped us early on understanding what such a trust could do, you know, giving us example, trust documentation from other towns and, you know, basically just... from other towns and, you know, basically just giving us an education. So I feel like they have that skill, and I'm glad they can fit it within the 2,500. I didn't understand what that our tab means. And so I guess that's a question. And I'll take that offline. But I think that means within the budget that we've already voted to, to give RHSO for this year. My other question, no, is it comment or concern? The agenda says Affordable Housing Trust, and we want to make that clear. It's a rehab trust that we're aiming to create, not that's focused on rehab of existing buildings. And yes, condos to start, but I personally, hello, can I continue? Hello, can I finish? Just another 30 seconds.
Go ahead. We can totally hear you.
The future vision, you know, could include lots of things, these small little dinky houses. It could include helping people make their houses accessible to keep seniors here. There's all kinds of things that can happen. But first, starting with condos, we know how that process works. The Acton Housing 30 has engaged and has a lot of information about how it works, and we want this to be successful. So we're hoping for a five unit pilot and then move on to scale if it looks like it's feasible. The rental for sale thing, the group had discussed the possibility of for sale, but the cost of subsidizing would be very high. And so our proposal is for rental to start. Do you have any other questions relative to what the group, at least how I could express what I think the group's concerns, hopes, dreams?
No, I think, I think we covered it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I urge you approval of John's proposal for the scope of work, presuming that when we get the thing in writing, that it'll be as promised. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item that we're going to discuss is there are a number of non-binding articles which were passed at town meeting. And this is just sort of a check in as to what progress has been made towards any of these, what's the interest on the part of the board to pursue them. It's more of a sort of a status update that I hope we can conduct fairly briefly tonight. The, the particular articles which, which carried was a non-binding resolution, number 50, non-binding resolution regarding Woodlawn Mortuary Chapel, 51, non-binding resolution for electric vehicle charging for residents of multifamily housing, Article 54, non-binding resolution for land and tree clearing limits bylaw, and number 56, a non-binding resolution mobilizing Acton's climate action plan, and number 57, non-binding resolution changing the state flag and seal. Again, as I, as I noted during the, talked about budget situations, I think we need to really pair what was voter at town meeting with some of the goals that, that this board voted on back in July. The only, and I think people can make their own assumptions as to whether we're pursuing these or not. The one observation that I would make is that the non-binding resolution land and tree clearing limits by law does not appear as one of the short term or long term goals. It was something that, that I actually proposed, but it did not get a sufficient number of votes. So that did not appear there. So I, at this point, sort of laying the table, I'd like to pass this off to, to the vice chair, who has done quite a bit of research work on it. And Jim, would you lead us through this?
Happy to, Dean. A little more context. The notion of doing this came out of some work that Ray Yakobi, the chair of the planning board, and I have been doing about how, how public input works with respect to, you know, Acton taking on projects. And one of the ways that we identified was, of course, through these non-binding warrant articles. But then we noted that there is, there, we were missing the step of, you know, having what we're doing now, what we're starting now, having the board review these publicly after their past and decide how, you know, if and how we want to proceed with them. I think I was under the sort of vague and incorrect notion that, you know, these, these non-binding warrant articles that passed overwhelmingly would just sort of automatically enter into the realm of what town staff did. But that was a, a clear misunderstanding of the relationship between the board and staff, that, that if we're going to have, expect the staff to spend extra time and town's money on things, it needs to be part of our, our communication with, with, with the manager. So I think in the future, it'd be good to do this much quicker after town meeting, so it can have, you know, an impact on our goals, our goal setting process and on the budget process. But anyway, that's, that's, that's the elaborate intro. So the first one, this non-binding resolution about Woodland Mortuary Chapel was, expressed a concern about altering the Woodlawn Chapel. And there has been some work on this that I learned about from, from Himager, and wondering if maybe she could sort of update us on what's been going on?
Yeah, absolutely. So the cemetery commission has been working really hard to try to figure out the best steps moving forward for ensuring the chapel is accessible and making sure that we're taking proper steps towards renovating as appropriate. But at the same time, recognizing that, at least per the trust, we do have certain limitations for what we can do as renovations, especially in kind of keeping the character of the building, keeping the historical significance of the building intact. And so the cemetery commission has been working on that. To my understanding, we do have staff, specifically Kimberly, who's been great, working on trying to put together a CPA application for funding a more robust design for making, I believe, the exterior more accessible. They're also, and the thing about the cemetery commission is that they do have to oversee, and they do have to consider different avenues of funding. So there's funding that comes from the trust. There's funding that comes potentially from CPA. And so one thing that they've been trying to do is trying to figure out how best to fund, you know, the interior changes, the exterior changes, in a way that everyone feels comfortable with. So that's the plan currently. Well, I, I know that it was a pretty quick turnaround. So if we hear any differently from staff that it may not be, this cycle may not be the time to put forth the CPA application on behalf of cemetery, on behalf of the cemetery chapel renovations, then I think that's something that the cemetery commission will definitely talk about. But so far, it seems promising. I think that the group is reaching a consensus with how to move forward. That was a long-winded rant, but the update.
David?
Yes, it is.
The other thing I learned during this process is that the, you know, the chapel trustees themselves also are, also have money that they're responsible for spending, and that the focus of, the initial focus of the CPA article would just be on design, with the hopes that the, between the cemetery trustees and the, and the chapel trustees, that actual construction can come from there. John, I didn't know if you had any particular staff update about whether the CPA application is going to be ready or, I'm not expecting you to, but in case you happen to know.
Yeah, I'm planning to bring to the November, the first November meeting, the CPA projects that we're planning to put in on behalf of the town to see if the board supports them. So I will let you know at that time.
Great, thanks so much. And I guess for each of these items, I'm, Mr. Chair, I wonder if we want to, you know, have a sense of the board or some, some sort of, you know, gee, we want to continue with this. I wasn't sure where we wanted to go with that.
Yes, I, I think that's a good idea, that we see that we've got some support. Personally, I would strongly advocate for making all of our facilities universally accessible. I think it's, it, not only is it a legal requirement, but I think it's a moral requirement as well. And I, I think that the, the resolution that was passed was sufficiently worded so that it certainly provides the opportunity to, to provide full accessibility to the chapel. So that is certainly something that I would support. But I, I'll just look, the board members, I guess, will do it sort of informally with the thumbs. David?
So I just would like to point out my understanding that this particular citizens petition was asking us not to do things that they felt were out of character with the chapel, not to do anything. That, in other words, this resolution wasn't asking us to move forward. I mean, I think it's a good idea to make it accessible, but I just want to emphasize that that's not in response to this particular citizens petition, because this citizens petition, again, asked us not to do things, kind of, because they, they just wanted to make sure that things were in what they felt was the character of, of the chapel.
I can provide more. Yes, so the original intent was to express concern that kind of the original plan that we had for the updates to the chapel were not, were not in line with preserving the historical aesthetic of it. But in recent conversations, the applicants are very, are very much for having it accessible, and they did state so at the town meeting too. But it, it was a balance of how do we make sure that, you know, we are making these updates while at the same time preserving that history. And so I think that this path of kind of creating a more robust design kind of satisfies both of that. So I think it does, it does actually match what the original intent of this non-binding resolution was.
Thank you. I think, just to amplify my comments, from the update that Himager has given us, it seems like, you know, that the work of the redesign and discussion of this is ongoing. So I, I don't see any reason why we should slam the brakes on, on this. And certainly, if, if folks are in favor of it. Okay, I think we've, keep doing what you're doing, Himager.
I should go on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. 51 is a non-binding resolution about electrical, electric vehicle charging for residents of multifamily housing. And it really had two parts. One was about changing bylaws, building codes, zoning, or some method that, that would require new multifamily construction to have, that have electric vehicles, electric vehicle charging stations or be ready to have them. The second part was about the creation of EV charging stations in existing multifamily buildings, which included a part about, you know, reaching out for grants that were available. And what was the, I want to say this phrase correctly. If resources allow, the town should create a matching grant program for owners of multifamily properties to encourage EV charging station adoption, and should explore best practices in encouraging EV charging infrastructure in existing properties. So I think, actually, John sent us an update on some of this work. I just wanted to also add before you, before you got updating on that, on that, John, that we, the, the Green Advisory Board just met before our meeting and got an update on the, you know, the new electrical code that's coming, both the, the stretch code that we will be put in automatically and the updated, the opt-in, what they call the opt-in specialized stretch code. Both of those codes will require different amounts of, one's 10%, one's 20% of EV charging readiness for multifamily construction. So I think part one is, seems like it's being taken care of for us by the state. But part two is, is, is all on us. So I'd love to hear more about, you know, what, what we're up to about that so far.
Sure. And I would just actually take a moment, if it's okay, just to note the staff's approach to non-binding articles. As discussed, in the discussion of the previous article, it wouldn't have been appropriate for staff to just do what town meeting voted as, as the town's legislative body without getting further direction from the select board, because even what was in the warrant didn't give us a clear direction to move forward. And with the town meeting happening in the spring and the board's goal setting happening in the summer, you know, there's really a good opportunity for the board to incorporate any priorities from the, the previous town meeting into the work plan for the year. For example, town meeting this year was May something, and goal setting was June 30. So without the goals representing some of the articles that were passed as non-binding articles, we didn't prioritize them from a staff standpoint. Some of the things that were approved as non-binding articles at town meeting were things that we were doing anyways. And that's how I would characterize Article 51. Article 51, as, as mentioned, points to some measures that were recommended in the climate action plan related to EV charging infrastructure. And so we had been at work at those and will continue to be at work at those. And having town meeting support it was certainly helpful. And if there's any further direction from the board, specifically about Article 51, we'd be happy to take it and work from that. Just to give an example of some of the things that are ongoing related to that, using ARPA funds, the Economic Development and Sustainability Office put together a grant program, which will provide $2,000 to multifamily property owners or business owners to help make improvements to their property to improve energy efficiency, to do things such as vehicle charging. We're going to launch that after the winter this year. We recently received $4,000 from a Mass Save grant to do an outreach campaign, and it's targeted at a mailing to specific audience of renters and those in the environmental justice community as designated by the state. We also have a DC Fast Charger that we received the grant to put in. We're going to put that in on, on Route 2A at 27, which is an area that's near a lot of multifamily housing. And the, there's a grant coming up in April that we're going to aggressively pursue to provide more energy efficiency upgrades for renters. And we think we'll have a competitive application for that as to the Mass Clean Energy Coalition. So for example, in our grant application, any, any support from the board would be, would be helpful. And we could also point to town meeting and its support of this article to say, look, the town people support this too. And that'll help the funding agency potentially give us a grant award. So that's an example of some of the work we're doing in that area.
Thanks. It's great to hear all about all that. I wanted to note also in my little research here that the, the Housing and Climate Justice for Acton Group also applied for a Mass Save grant and also got it. So I'm looking forward to, you know, since the goals are overlapping, cooperation in, in those efforts. I think that's all I had to say.
So, you know, this, this, first of all, I thank you for running these things by the board before taking action on them. I think it's, it's quite important that we be able to interject how we want these, these things carried out. In particular, this one, you know, some matching grant is one potential solution here, but not the only solution and, and maybe not the appropriate solution. So many of the, you know, so first of all, in, in an apartment complex situation, you're forced to share chargers. And therefore, having them be a part of some network makes sense, right? And as part of that, that the rates set on the chargers can easily pay for the chargers themselves. It's It's actually less than the cost of the electricity, right? So, and there are, there are network vendors which will essentially install the chargers for free. I mean, you have to have the electricity there, and I understand that that's, that's an issue, depending on what the current capacity is of the apartment building or whatever the, the structure is that's nearby. But the, the charging network companies will put in a charger for free, and you pay it back over time with revenues from the charger. And so that's another way, right? And so, you know, I, I would like to know about these ways before we jump into a particular solution, as to what, which ones are most viable, least costly, you know, most effective, that kind of thing. The other thing I would say is the availability of fast chargers is huge. If, if fast chargers are available, you can deal with an electric car in the same way that people deal with their gas cars. No one fills up their gas car at home, right? You know, they have a gas tank on the side of the garage or something. That, we don't need to do that because gas stations are around, right? And we, in places where there are superchargers, and I know people who do this, it's, they deal with it the same way, they don't have any charging at home, and when they go out sometime on their way back, they charge it. And if it's a fast charger, that's, that's doable, right? With a, with a destination charger, that's not doable. So that's, the, the extent that we can encourage more fast chargers in town, you know, that, that's going to be also just essential. I mean, for people visiting the town, right? I, I know when I go and visit relatives, for example, especially in way northern New England where there are very few chargers, and if they can't accommodate me running an extension cord out their garage, right, I have to find a place to fast charge my car, right? And, you know, so fast chargers help, charging networks and paying for, out of the fees help, and, and possibly some matching program, or, or some other encouragement or inducement for landlords.
Yeah, I would, I would make the observation that, you know, given the really grim news that we got from the Finance Committee, you know, the, the chances of, of me supporting, using town tax dollars to subsidize charging stations on private property, I'd say that chances of me supporting that are really slim. And I applaud Dave for, David for his, his comments on other ways of doing this and encouraging it, but I just don't see that this is a legitimate town taxpayer expense that we should invoke. So I, glad to see that there's progress been made, but I, I think there's a big if as far as, as, as the town coming up with any kind of a significant amount of money to support any matching grant program.
I'll add one more piece to this conversation. The Eversource and, well, Eversource here, National Grid and other towns that, where they provide electricity, are in the process of getting approval for their EV infrastructure programs. And so, for example, at, at the condo where I live, we're, we're waiting for the regulations to become available because they, Eversource will pay the, the very large cost of all the infrastructure changes, digging the trenches, you know, upgrading the transformers, and for apartments leased in this proposed program, for, for multifamily dwellings where there's a significant, I think over 50% low-income population, they'll also pay for the chargers as well. The reason I love this program is because it allows the kilowatt hour cost for the electricity to be pretty close to the actual cost of the electricity, as opposed to charging networks and fast chargers where it's, there's usually a significant premium to be paid for the, you know, for that. So that's all I, I think, yeah, I don't, I don't sense big support from the board for, for looking into a matching, a matching program that you're talking about, but the, the ARPA grants, the money that we've been able to give seems really, really great, and, and as well as the other, the other support programs that you've mentioned, John.
David? Yep? Well, I just want to say to ma, to make clear here, just because, you know, it may be harder to do the, the matching program, doesn't mean this is, you know, it's a bad idea, right? The capability is not a bad idea. I've been talking about this since my first year on the board, it's very, it's, I think critical that we have charging infrastructure where people live and work. The slow charger, level-two charger infrastructure where people live and work, in order to be able to, to support, I mean, we already have, what, 6% electric cars, something like that? 6% of new sales are, are electric cars? So, you know, and, and that's, that's only going up, right? And so it's really important that we get ahead of this, especially for apartment dwellers who have little leverage by themselves for, to get these chargers. And we had a woman here who lived in a condo situation with shared garages, and she tried to charge her car, right? And the rest of the people in the condo association didn't like that because she was sucking electricity out of the shared garages. This is one of these areas where the charging networks, that, you know, you tap your little card and it charges you for your electricity, that, that, they make a lot of sense, right? And they, and then people don't get annoyed that you're wasting their money on your car, which, which makes perfect sense. So I, I just want to point out that there are, and, and I think this is one of the key reasons why these things are run by us as a board rather than just worked on as they were written for, for town meeting, because there are other ways, especially when something includes a solution, rather than, you know, this is the problem we want to address, right? And, and I believe that we should address the, the problem any way we, we can. I, I think we, we should be beginning to develop ideas for how we can encourage existing landlords, right? To, I mean, the, the zoning changes for, and the code changes for new construction, that'll slowly fix this problem. But for existing situations, we, we should be thinking about new and innovative ways to encourage either destination chargers there where people live, or, as I said, fast chargers around town of sufficient quantity to support the people who want to have an electric car. Thank you.
John, does that give you sufficient information about the kind of level of, or details of support that the board is giving you, or would you rather have a specific motion?
Yeah, a specific motion would be helpful, because I think, based on the conversation, I think what we're doing is sufficient, but if you want us to do more, then a, a motion would be helpful.
Well, then I might recommend a motion, let's see. The board encourages the town to continue to look for ways to expand the number of car charging stations available to renters. And I think that's quiet on the actual financial mechanism, but it expresses the importance of the goal.
Okay, we've got a motion. Need a second?
I'll second. John?
That seems like a wise addition, thank you. Multifamily and renters, because it's this, there's a Venn diagram there.
John?
I guess my question would be, is this a short-term goal or a long-term goal that you're talking about here?
I don't have a clear thought on that.
Well, my, my thought is generally our short-term goals are things we, we want to accomplish within this fiscal year with existing money, and clearly, to my mind, this might be a long-term goal, but I caution the board, and we, we went through goal-setting process in July, and now we're adding to it, and in two months, we're going to add to it again. So I'm, I, I'm not sure that I really want to characterize this as a goal. I was thinking of Jim's motion as being more of a, gee, John, you, you seem to be moving ahead the way we'd like you to do, and just keep doing that. I, I don't, I would not like to characterize it as a, as an actual goal, because then, you know, in two months, we, we will have another trendy group of things we want to talk about, and we want to make those as goals, and, you know, the whole point behind the goal-setting process is at the beginning of the year, set achievable number of goals, which we voted on, and that should be that. Let town staff pursue those goals with as much vigor as possible, but don't keep, you know, adding more things into the wheelbarrow. Himager?
I have a quick question. So you mentioned that there's like two parts to it. Part one aligns really well with the work that we're currently doing. Part two is the one where you felt like it could have used more board direction for more specific actions. I'm wondering, comparing part two with what we have in the Climate Action Plan, are there any synergies there? Is that something that maybe, you know, as opposed to stating it as a new short-term or long-term goal for the Select Board, maybe something that we can say, like, we'd love to maybe put more focus on that moving forward this year? That's something that aligns with our Climate Action Plan, but something that we may want to start sooner rather than later?
Yes, this is, the, the need for more EV charging stations is, is well laid out in the Climate Action Plan, and specifically calls out multifamily renter populations. So we could describe this as, you know, in accordance with the Climate Action Plan, you know, please continue to look for ways to accelerate the, you know, the, the adoption of, of electric charging stations for multifamily and renters.
I, since we're going to, since John has told us that he's going to be incorporating the Climate Action Plan into the Capital Improvement Plan, which he'll be presenting in December, I, I don't know as we really need to call this one out in particular. I, I'm not sure that, that it's an appropriate vote at this point. David?
I, I was just going to offer a friendly amendment to this, to replace a goal with the, the Select Board's supports. And, you know, it's not a specific thing that they, we're asking the town manager to do right now or even as a long-term goal, but I think just the official vote to saying that we support this, when it comes up for discussion as they're doing further climate action planning, planning, that they would know. So as the seconder, I would offer that as a friendly amendment.
I'd happily accept that.
I guess we'll call for vote. All in favor of the amended motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passed. Thank you.
This was a, a non-binding resolution about land-tree-clearing-limits-bylaws. And let me glance at it again so I can summarize it correctly. Oh, it's very nice and short. The Select Board should bring land-tree-clearing-limits-bylaws to town meeting, for town meeting to vote on. The part about this I know is that Richard Kelleher on the Design Review Board has been working on language for land-tree-clearing-limits-bylaws. He's been in consultation with the Green Act and Land Use Committee. What I don't know is whether Kel, Richard, sorry, has, has been in contact or with the, with town staff about any of this, and if we want to use some staff time on this, which I would recommend at some point, if you're going to be writing a bylaw, you gotta have staff involved, that might be helped on by having us, you know, as a board, encourage that. Yeah. And I didn't know if, if, John, if you had any information about whether the planning staff had engaged with, with Richard Kelleher on this at all, or whether he was just working on this on his own?
Specifically, I'm not sure to what extent they've worked with planning staff. It's not something that I've asked them to prioritize in Town Hall. I'm sure that if there's any questions from Richard, that they, they answer them, but I'm not sure that they're, that they're actively working on it at this time.
I would observe that I'm the liaison to the Design Review Board, and I will be attending their upcoming meeting, which I think is later on this week, and I believe this is one of the items on the agenda as, as an update. So I, perhaps after I've heard what they have to say and how they're going to pursue it, I could report back to the Select Board. Now, I think, you know, passing a bylaw like this, it can be very involved, obviously lots of legal review, and I believe it would probably have to end up being heard by the Planning Board as well. So it's, it might not be something that's going to get approved in, in May, but I can certainly report back to folks. David?
So this is one of those areas where I would like the opportunity to have the board make considerations, and I, I'm somewhat familiar that there are different approaches to tree-clearing bylaws, and I would love it if the Planning Board or, or, sorry, the Design Review Board or the Planning Board or conjunct, you know, a group, you know, together, would present to us what the approaches are and what they recommend, and then, you know, I don't, I agree that it's, it's be very tight for this year, but at least that we could consider it in our goals for next year or move forward in some of the legal thinking as to how, well, first, we could discuss among ourselves if we agree with what they recommend and whatever approach is used, and, or if we want to change that, and then, you know, it's a step forward, is what I'm saying. And I, I would love to get that recommendation and, and be able to step forward.
I'd be happy to present that at the Design Review Board later on this week.
So it sounds like we have a way to proceed, which is Dean will be coming back to us after talking with Design Review Board, and then we can consider whether we want to, you know, what direction we want to give to John about the staff working on it. Does that sound right? Okay, thank you.
Number 56, Jim?
56 has an awful lot of words in it. It's called Mobilizing Acton's Climate Action Plan. But to get down to the, you know, the resolves, a lot, most of the resolved clauses are simply about, as it says, supporting the Climate Action Plan. I think the specific one that might be worth some, that I have some thoughts about, that there is a clause here that the Select Board will set and revise as necessary goals consistent with the Climate Action Plan targets, and that these townwide goals include greenhouse gas emissions reduction, solar installations, broad electric vehicle adoption, and there's, there's a whole list of things here. The key, the key to this, as I'm thinking of it, is that these are very different than our normal municipal goals, because these are townwide goals. They're, they're, they're aspirations for, you know, you know, how many, how many people are using electric vehicles, for example, which is not under the direct control of the town, but is under our influence. So it's, it's a change in what we usually do to be get, to be involved in that kind of influencing. I also think it's important, but I don't think it's something we can settle quickly in, you know, at, at this meeting tonight. What I'd What I'd like to recommend for now is that, is that John and I meet with whatever set of staff and advocates makes sense to bring to a room to develop a proposal, but the process for doing this, and bring that back to the Select Board for consideration. This could also be the same group that considers, we do have a goal as a Select Board to implement the sustainability policy that the Board passed in 2018, which also includes a goal-setting process. So it seems like those two goal-setting processes are probably the same thing, but we need to, we would need to think through how that's done and come back to the Board with a proposal.
Well, I'm looking here under our short-term goals. Yeah, it is goal number seven. So I think, I think it fits nicely into this, so I'm not sure, we have to take any additional action at this point, as far as direction.
Just give me an okay to meet with John about it.
We'll have to see if John thinks it's okay. David?
Just a point of clarification. I think it's good to move forward with this, but does, what's meant by this petition, is it separate from initiatives taken directly by the town for municipal properties, right? This is not that, right? This is the influencing the whole town to move forward on the Climate Action Plan. Understood, thank you.
And I think it's important that town staff not get involved in particular amounts of advocacy. And, you know, I'm a little uneasy with, you know, the numerous quotes about all of these other organizations that we should be supporting. And, you know, I, I agree with David that, you know, we should move ahead with whatever we can do legitimately with town funds and town staff on town property, but I'm not sure that there's a role for the town to hector people in one direction or another as to how they should be making their energy decisions. Jim?
I think the useful model here might be public health, where we spend town resources, time and money to, you know, persuade people to change their behavior, because it's going to be helpful for the, you know, the larger, the larger entity that is, you know, all of us living here. So I think it's not unprecedented, but it's still, I agree, it needs to be done carefully so that we're not, you know, treading into areas that don't belong to a municipality.
I, I think the situation I fear with this is what I've seen with other government programs, you know, objective creep, where, you know, you try to pursue this and you try to encourage people to do certain things, and then when they don't, then the next step is, well, let's pass some law which is going to mandate people to do certain things. And so I, I think we need to nip that in the bud and realize, you know, that there, although these goals might all be laudable, it's not necessarily something that local government legitimately should have a lot of influence on, other than, you know, attempting to encourage people. We encourage people not to use plastic bags, but they continue to do so, so the next thing you know, we've got a law that says you can't. So I think, you know, it's, any kind of an outreach done by anybody, and we don't have any particular funding for this, because it did come in at the last minute and after the budget was formulated, but going long-term, I think the focus should be on education. And, you know, if your educational goals are frustrated, don't think you're going to go immediately to legislation. Silence.
We could go back and forth, but it didn't seem that useful. So is it okay if I come back with a plan after consulting with the manager?
I, I think that would be great.
Can I just make one comment?
Please.
I completely agree that the vast majority of Evershire needs to be in education, and I think the arguments are actually pretty easy to make, frankly. But there is a place for certain rules, and, you know, we even passed a request for a home rule petition in one of those cases, right? It makes absolutely no sense to add fossil fuel infrastructure anyplace, right? I mean, that's really different than telling someone that they have to get rid of their boiler, right? But if someone's building a new house, no one should be using gas or oil or propane, unless they're going to tear down the house next year, and it's not going to have any effect on climate change, right? So it doesn't make, so there, there's, I think there's a place for certain rules here, and we, the whole town, the whole town meeting agreed to that. But at the same time, I completely understand your point. We don't want to get onerous about the educational aspects of this, right? I think the arguments are, are pretty easy to make once you get, you have to get, you know, people past some old habits, and we've already had luck, some of which has been expressed at these meetings, you know, from developers, once they look into, you know, building houses that are electric, oh, that's better. You know, it's easier for them, it's cheaper for them, it's better for their customers. And so, anyway, I think so there's, we don't want a lot of rules, but that doesn't mean there's no rules.
Thank you. Number fifty-seven.
This is our last one. This was about the state seal and flag and supporting, changing it. And the only specific action that's called for here is that the clerk would send a copy of this resolution to a number of people who are listed here in, you know, elected officials and appointed officials, and just request that they continue their strong advocacy and support for the work of the aforementioned special commission. I think this is a pretty easy lift. It's a single letter by the clerk to a number of officials. It seems to express the will of town meeting, so I would recommend that we ask the town manager to have the clerk implement this.
Okay, I agree with you, Jim. It's a pretty simple lift. All in favor of asking the manager to direct the clerk?
I see five thumbs up. Thank you. That was interesting to do. Let's do that again sometime, maybe more soon after the town meeting.
Thank you. Item seven, designate board member to participate in Boy Scout merit badge for citizenship in the community interview on clean energy and climate change. Do we have any volunteers to do that?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Jim has volunteered. Thank you, Jim.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Just for the future, and I don't know what the rest of the Board feels, I have no problem with the Chair asking one of us to do something, right? Because sometimes we're either two or three weeks to the next meeting, and, you know, obviously, you can't talk about this with all of us to decide, but you could do something like ask the Town Manager to gather our availability, our interest, and then ask one of us to do it. I would just encourage the Chair in the future to move one of these things along, if necessary.
Thank you. Item eight, designate board member for Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Anthony Tyler and Derek Lou, October 29th, 2022. This is Acton Troupe One, my troupe, so I will volunteer to do that. It's always a pleasure. All right, moving ahead. Consent items. Number nine, accept proceeds from sale of town vehicles. Number ten, approve committee appointment, Hemma Santaran Krishnan, and I apologize in advance, full member of Recreation Commission, term to expire 6/30/2025. Number eleven, approve committee appointment, Zengguang, full member Transportation Advisory Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2024. Item twelve, accept gift recreation department for side-by-side ADA trike valued at $2,500 from Melissa Norton. Number thirteen, accept and sign 2022 town election warrant. Number fourteen, approve request for use of town sidewalks in West Acton, Acton-Barksborough United Way, November 1st through 5th, 2022, for chalk the walk for mental health. Now, accept a motion to accept consent items nine through fourteen inclusive.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Looking for one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Nice timing.